That is the order. It would be.
Okay. Okay, calm down, we'll get there anyways. Yeah, literally. Sorry, I'm gonna call this public hearing to order. In attendance this evening are supervisors Cassiola, Fleer, Barney and Fisher, as well as township engineer Dan Dizerath and township solicitor Gretchen Moore. If you intend to speak at this hearing, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Even if you think you might speak, please stand and. This is a public hearing to consider conditional use application 2023-001. Yeah, I'm sorry. Usually I get told I'm yelling, I'm trying not to. Public hearing, this is a public hearing to consider conditional use, I'm not yelling at you. Application 2023-0014 for the Toward Toward property at Cluster Homes Land Development. This public hearing was duly advertised on September 24th, 2023, and ran again on September 25th, 2023. Do you wanna present now? Do you want to do your presentation? Just step to the microphone, state your name, company you're with, and you can start the presentation.
My name is Bill Moldovan, M-O-L-D-O-V-A-N. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I'm here representing the applicant, DNM Real Estate, to discuss what we've done in the past two months in regards to revising what we presented to the board of supervisors and the public during the August public hearing. I'm not going to go through the entire presentation again. I think what we heard during the the August hearing was that the cluster development, as it was presented to you, did not meet what the township felt the intent of the ordinance was. What we did in response to what we heard was make revisions to our plan to reduce the number of lots. I'm skipping to the revised plan. What we did was we increased the lot size, minimum lot size, at the the build line, the width from 65 feet, which was permitted as part of the cluster development ordinance, and we extended that to 72 feet wide minimum. What that did was increased our side yard setbacks. Previously, we had approximately eight-foot side yards. This will have approximately 32 feet between homes. It's a 72-foot lot. The proposed homes will be a maximum 40 feet wide. That leaves 32 feet on each lot, approximately 16 feet on either side. The applicant can't can't guarantee that the lot, the house will be centered on the lot, but our intent is to increase the distance between homes and make this feel like a more open development as you're driving down the street once it's, once it's constructed. So what that did to the lot count, our previous lot count was 101. We've reduced that to 97, which is still well within the permitted in the cluster development zoning ordinance. The remainder of the, the plan stayed as we presented previously. We're still meeting open space provisions. We're still providing trails in the form of a pedestrian pathway that serpentines through the property and connects to the proposed sidewalk pedestrian network within the, within the development. We were asked previously about our sanitary sewer plan and the discussions that we had with the Midway Sewage Authority at the August hearing. We had yet to receive any written documentation from Midway. We did receive that on August 9th, 2023, from David Akach, the plant manager. And we submitted that letter to the township. And in that letter, he stated that the authority has no objection to this development as it's proposed with individual grinder pumps on each lot and a public force main extension to the closest public infrastructure. He also did mention that, as in any development, there would be additional details about the design. It would have to be vetted through the authority and their engineer, but that would be the same as associated with any development of this nature. So with that, I did want to mention that NVR is here, as well as Michael Crooney, who's representing the applicant. We are here to answer any questions, and I believe Mr. Crooney is here to to take care of some housekeeping in regards to entering exhibits into the testimony.
Sorry.
With, with that, I'd ask any questions that you have about the revisions we made to the plan that you have for myself or any of the developer team that's here tonight.
I think Supervisor Fleer has questions.
I do. Can you, can you go back to where it showed the plan? What are your intentions where you're coming in off of King Road? You don't show no lots or nothing on both sides.
Our intentions off of King Road?
Where you're going tying into King Road.
In the north part of the plan.
Yeah, there's, there's an overhead electric easement in that location. That's why we don't have lots on the planned left side of the, the entrance. It's encumbered by an electric easement. And on the right-hand side, we're proposing a stormwater pond to control stormwater for the proposed development.
Charlie, did you have any questions or comments?
These are lots down here. How far are they from the property line of existing homes?
It's a 30-foot setback required by the, the ordinance. A buffer of 30 feet. So any proposed lots would have to meet that 30-foot buffer.
A 50-foot, ain't it? 25?
That's not to the, that's to the back of the lot, the 20-foot buffer. Then the lot starts.
Correct.
Charlie?
As far as the buffer zone is concerned, is there a lot of vegetation gonna be left without being disturbed on that, on the, as far as the whole plan?
Yes, our intent would to, would be to have no grading in that buffer and leave the existing vegetation that's there today.
Okay, well, I know that that property was logged out by the Amish. I don't know what was left there and whether there is a sufficient buffer between the, the plan and the other residential people.
We've shown the required buffer per the ordinance. Our intent would be to meet any other zoning ordinance provision in regards to buffer yards to, to protect the existing landowners from being impacted from the proposed development.
Okay.
And Dan, did, did you increase these radiuses?
We're not to that level yet, Ron, but we've advised the developer that they'll have to put 35-foot radiuses in at all the intersections.
Yeah, understood. I, I, I don't think we're asking for any variation or leniency for, in that regard.
The other reason I'm saying is like up McConnell's Trails, every radius got crumbled. The trucks coming in and out. And, and down here where you're coming onto King Road, you got the same situation as McConnell's, they're coming straight out. And I think they widened it twice.
Right, yeah. I mean, it's, it'll be subject to further study. I mean, we can make it as wide as we need to really there.
And I don't think the applicant has any problem doing that per what's been seen in other developments as problematic.
I just wanna follow up on Ron's question. That, that area, that cul-de-sac, the northeast corner, if assuming, or the east corner, the top one up there, does those upper lots meet that 25-foot buffer with, uh, to the back of the yards? Cause it looks, it's like it's pinched at that property line.
Our original plan, they did not meet the, the buffer requirement. We revised it, and this plan certainly meets those buffer requirements.
Well, I helped write this ordinance a long time ago, and it, it's just going completely opposite of what the intent was on, on the lot widths. The, the cluster developments were intended to have smaller parcels with the large common areas in, in the, of the remaining property with a royal, rural village-like atmosphere, meaning tighter lots and then a lot of green space around it. What prompted you to make actually wider lots? Because cluster developments help us in that the shorter utilities to maintain and shorter streets to maintain. What prompted the, actually make the lots wider as opposed to the lots deeper?
It was what we heard at the last hearing was that the township, other developments seemed as though the houses were on top of one another. So in order to combat that, we made the, the lots wider. If we, if we reduce the, the width at the street, the houses aren't going to reduce the size of them, and it's going to essentially have less space between homes.
Yeah, I understand.
Tom, it was after looking to at Timber Run, which is a cluster development, and realizing that in McConnell's Trails, the, what's the maximum width? I wanna say it was like 60, it was real, really small. But Timber Run is wider. We even went and measured them out. It's like anywhere between 75 and 80. So that was the goal of this, was to try to make it sim, more similar to Timber Run, which is a cluster development.
And, and I appreciate what you did here where the lots, the back of the lots on parallel streets don't butt each other. That's what PRDs always end up being. But there's just so much grading around the back, it, it still really isn't accessible, the, the green space. I don't see any area that's really accessible to the green space. And, and that kind of flies in the face of what a, the cluster development was supposed to be. But I understand that topography is, uh, is challenging in this area.
And the applicant is committed to placing pedestrian trails throughout the development and throughout that open space. It's gonna require some grading and some switchbacks, which are shown in green on the plan. But, but we are committed to making that open space as accessible as possible, given the topography.
Are these ponds gonna dump on the people down below?
No, they're going to discharge the water of the Commonwealth that exists on the, the site. So there are streams on this site, which the stormwater basins will discharge to. So they will follow existing streams off property and, and through adjacent parcels. About, again, will be required to attenuate peak stormwater discharges.
Can you enlighten us on some of the improvements that, that you're proposing on the township roads? The impact of those?
I defer to Mr. Crooney at this point. He's prepared to talk about the off-site improvements that the township requested.
I don't think there's, are there any other board questions for him? Okay, if you wanna, you can swap out and just please state your name and the company you work for.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Crooney. I'm an attorney representing the applicant here from Sweat Law Office. So I'll attempt to address some of the questions that I heard and from review of last month's, or last hearing. Just to, just to talk on the landscape questions that were had about the buffer. Obviously, this is just the first step, the conditional use approval. Applicant understands that there will still have to be a final site plan development, so a developer's agreement with the buffer zone and a, a landscape plan requirements can be finalized with the engineers, with the, with the township at that time. But the plan, as shown, does meet the buffer requirements, and they are prepared to meet the requirements, what the actual specifics might be as far as the trees and things that might get planted. They're open to working with the township at that later date, when, when that comes about. Same thing with the intent. You know, it's a, it's a well-drafted ordinance with requirements there. I would submit to the board that they are able to meet the setbacks, the lot widths, the lot sizes, based off of the requirements there, to meet the intent. And also, access to the, the topography, you know, to the, the green space, the open space. Once again, they're, they're proposing and showing trails. That can be tweaked and finalized as part of the final subdivision land development plan. I don't think the developer is opposed to that and willing to, you know, get feedback when we get to that plan, when we get to that point, to try and ensure the type of access that the board intended when they drafted this ordinance. Again, keep it in mind that the topography is what it is, being in Western Pennsylvania. And as far as the off-site improvements, I would just submit to the board that the developer is willing, again, once we're at a closer step in the final subdivision land development plan, to, to work with the township and to take those under consideration. However, my reading of the ordinance and of Cecil's ordinance at large is that you do not have a traffic impact ordinance in place. And so any proposed off-site improvements would not be permissible under the municipality's planning code at this time. However, the, the applicant is willing to address those, once again, down the road when we come in for the final developer's agreement and the subdivision land development plan.
Tom, can you talk into your microphone so she can hear you?
I said I don't disagree with what he said about not being able to require it.
And, and I will, I don't wanna speak on behalf of the applicant, but it's my understanding that they have taken the proposal that the township engineers have come up with, the requested improvements, and are seeking out a cost for that with bids and everything. And that will ultimately come down to what the cost is, and that's down the road, and the, the developer and the applicant is willing to look at that. I would just proffer for the board that right now, that's not, not something that can be attached as part of their conditional use application at this time. But they're not against reviewing that down the road.
Who has this property under contract right now?
I believe it's the applicant D, DNM Real Estate. What's that?
Stan Ambroski.
I believe it's under DNM Real Estate, is the.
Stan Ambroski. But they're not gonna be building in there.
Can you do me a favor? Can you not speak from the audience? Can you just, cause we're recording it, so if you're gonna speak, can you just step to the microphone so that it can be caught in the recording? Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ryan Klausnitzer with NVR. To answer your question, Mr. Fleer. Ryan Klausnitzer, K-L-O-U-S-N-I-T-Z-E-R with NVR. The property is under Morocco Holdings. Is who has the property under agreement. And Brian's in the audience, if you need to speak to him.
He's with Stan Ambroski. He's with Stan Ambroski.
Uh, yes, he is.
Okay.
Any questions for myself or the applicants that are here?
Any other question? I don't have any either, Charlie. Ron?
No.
If you wanna be seated, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, and then I may need to have you guys jump, you just have to talk to the microphone or we'll answer, but we'll let you know.
Okay, and just before, I would just like to proffer exhibits. I don't know how we'll end up doing it, but at some point, I'd like to just offer exhibits into the hearing record. I'll wait, I'll wait till.
You could offer them now if you want.
Okay. It's my understanding that the board has received, that the township has received the whole USB packet with the revised plans, with the project narratives, with the supplemental project narratives. I'd offer that to be submitted into the hearing record.
Yes, I have. Jack has it too.
That, that's all I have at this, for now. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm gonna open it up for public comment. I just ask that you come to the microphone one at a time and state your name and address for the record.
Lynette King, 99 King Road. Just have some questions and follow-up from, from the last, the hearing that was here. Now, I, you know, traffic, for me, living on this road my whole life pretty much, traffic has become a major, major issue. I mean, I can't even pull out of my driveway anymore without, you know, having to look both ways. And so my concern was, as I mentioned, I know when they did that traffic feasibility study, and it definitely was not at the peak of time during school, during travel times. It definitely was not.
Can I stop you for a second? Did you provide the traffic study to us or to Dan, to the engineer? In the traffic study, does it say the date and time that it was performed? Dan, can you make sure to provide that to us? The traffic study that they're saying they performed?
Okay.
Um, was it, she's saying it wasn't during the peak time. Do you remember?
The, the peak time, whatever the traffic people deem as necessary is usually, it's between, somewhere between seven and nine?
No, that's not the question. It's the time of year. It's the time of year that they did it. School is almost out.
Sorry, I just wanna answer your questions as they go.
Yeah, so if everybody remembers.
Can you just state your name again? Sorry, I know it's a pain, but it's.
Ryan Klausnitzer with NVR. So last year, when this, when this came about, we were asked to provide traffic data as the school year, before the school year ended. So we scrambled and got traffic counts done before the school year was done. In June.
In June. When is school out?
It, but the buses went by when they did it. That's why we scheduled it before school was out.
That's the end of the season?
My kids go to school, school is out at the end of May last year.
Well, regardless, we made sure before the end of the school year. I remember talking with Dan, that was provided, and that was an issue. We asked when the school was out.
Okay, we can verify that.
Yeah, we'll verify it.
Yeah, we can verify it. Yeah, I, I don't wanna say he's wrong, but I have kids in school, and I know that school is out in June, so.
Okay, and then just a quick question. Is this zoned for PRD?
Is this, this is zoned R1, so they're asking for a cluster development, not a PRD.
Okay, so we're changing that from the last meeting. Cluster?
Well, not changing it. They're still, just because the applicant's saying it's a cluster development doesn't mean the board is gonna vote that way to agree. So last time, if you remember, I had said that I did not believe this to be a cluster development. I thought it was a PRD, but to be honest, I thought Timber Run was a PRD too, and I was proven wrong, it's a cluster development. So based on Timber Run, it does, it is similar now, similarly laid out to Timber Run, which was approved as a cluster development. But I, I understand what you're saying, cause I had the same question.
Right. And let's see, so are you guys aware of the number of uncapped wells that are over there? Seriously. I mean, the, the DEP was at my house last week. There are at least five uncapped wells, probably more, just in that little area there, right where you're proposing the flat part. Also, you have not contacted the Fish and Game Commission at all. Don't worry, I called them for you. So there are numerous bald eagle nests up there. And also, now that you're gonna be crossing a stream and dumping into the stream, you're definitely gonna have to apply with them, for sure. The improvements that you were discussing, are we talking about road improvements? Is that, is that?
Yes, the off-site, the off-site improvements that Supervisor Cassiola asked them about were improvements to King Road and Rising Road.
And improvement, you mean widen it?
So there has nothing been committed at this point.
There's nowhere to widen King Road.
So there's nothing been committed to at this point, so we can't comment on whether or not that would be the improvement, but there, that's what was asked, was for them to do a study to see what could be done.
You know what? I am so opposed to this. I can't even tell you. I realize it's not my property. I, I, not because I live on King Road, but I'm talking for all of the residents around that area. Profio's not ready for this, King's not ready for this. This is asinine.
Thank you.
The, just for the record, the ATR counts were performed on Thursday, June 1st, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm Nancy Marshall.
Were you sworn in though?
No, I wasn't. I'm sorry.
So, can you stop for one second? Good catch, thank you.
I'm Nancy Marshall, 45, Tomahawk Claim Lane, McDonald. Some of the things that I have an issue with, I'm not sure anybody here can answer, but on a public road, when they draw lines down the center and along the side, are there any kind of regulations about how wide your road has to be? And I ask this question because King Road doesn't have any lines. And I think it's, I suspect it's because it's not wide enough throughout most of the road for it to have that.
I mean, the standard township road, when we put in a new road, has a 22-foot cartway. That means from gutter to gutter, it's 11-foot lanes, two 11-foot lanes.
Okay.
And most of our roads are not, don't have pavement markings or centerline, because that's a repeated thing that we have to do for maintenance all the time. The roads, you're probably right. I mean, there's not, that's not the reason why it's not marked though. It's probably just a country road that's 18 feet wide or, you know, somewhere, some variation of that.
Okay. Last year, I presented to you surveys that I had done of the residents, and the fact that over 85% of the residents of the Rising Road, Profio Road, King Road area want lots of at least three acres. I, this is, I mean, I'm just telling you, Ron, that's what people in the neighborhood said they want.
But it's not feasible.
I understand that's not feasible, but this is quite different than what people in the area want. Okay?
Well, you gotta look, Mr. Tired has a right to sell his property. And if these guys prepare.
Yes, and you have a right to zone it.
I understand that, you know, you want to be heard. I just ask that you not yell at him while he's trying to talk. That's all I'm asking. It's just, it's not going to get anywhere good if we're all yelling at each other. Go ahead.
One of the things that I just heard is that you plan to discharge from this property into a creek. Is anybody examining, I guess it's now called Silver Creek, but the flooding along that creek, and you're just going to be contributing more? I mean, how many times is poor Margaret Andrews going to be flooded out of her home? Because you're adding yet more water that would have been absorbed by a natural environment, but will not be absorbed with all that concrete? And finally, nobody is still able to address the Rising Road underpass. Unfortunately, for reasons that we don't know, we're not able to get the state of Pennsylvania to take any responsibility for the traffic problems that we're having. I approached Jack King months ago about at least putting a stop sign ahead sign coming down from the turnpike. That sign's still not there. I don't know. Maybe they just choose to ignore Jack. A lot of improvements need to be done to Rising Road to make it acceptable for all of the developments that we're talking about now. And those improvements aren't being really seriously considered.
I think the Kemp girls are working very hard on that.
Yeah, I would disagree with that. I don't think it's fair to say that those improvements aren't seriously, being seriously considered, because quite honestly, they haven't presented anything to us. We've expressed the concern to them, and they are, from what I understand, diligently working on a plan. It may be something we're okay with, and it may be something we're not, but I don't think it's fair to say that they're not taking them seriously, because I do think they are.
I'm just thinking, based recently on a request for just a stop sign ahead sign, that hasn't happened in six months.
Are you talking about the state or are you talking about the applicant?
We don't, I'm talking about the state not addressing our requests.
Right, but we can't, as a board, hold the applicant responsible for the state's unwillingness to help us.
I understand, I understand. I'm not addressing them.
Right, but you have to keep that in mind. Like, when we're considering the facts of this, we can't hold the applicant responsible for something that's out of their control. If they meet the requirements of the ordinance, and they meet what we have written in there, there's no, I don't say there's nothing we can do, but we have to be cautious. They are willing, they are trying to work with us on off-site improvements. We haven't seen what those are at this point, or had an in-depth discussion about what those may be, but we can't, because the state isn't doing something, it wouldn't be a valid reason to deny the application.
Okay.
Another thing, I know you're concerned about the flooding. These ponds will slow it down. They'll catch the water and release it slowly.
My problem a few years ago was a pond that burst and flooded my home and washed out my road.
Who's pond was it?
The Turnpike's pond.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon Mazaco, 230 Profio Road. Is this better?
Yeah, can you state your name again?
Yeah, it's Sharon Mazaco, M.A.Z.Z.O.C.C.O., 230 Profio. The only, I appreciate the developers, I think they've actually put together, being an adjoining property owner, putting that buffer in is, means a lot to me. I know when they built Timber Run, a lot of the people lost all the trees between their place and the road. That doesn't look like that's going to happen. Darlene, I know the Amish logged that, they very selectively logged that. There's still a lot of trees behind my house, so it's not like it's all small trees. There should, it should be good. The things I'm worried about are the unkept wells. I'm old enough to remember when that unknown well exploded in Bridgeville above, and like blew a house up. Do you guys remember that? It happened like years ago. So, I'm really worried about the unkept wells. I don't want them just covered up. I'd like the EPA or someone to take a look at those. My other concern, and I know I brought this up to the developers, is the entrance on Profio Road. I know they said there's sight distance if people are going 25 miles an hour. Nobody drives 25 on that road. All I'm asking is just put like a three-way stop sign up there, just to kind of slow people down. And I just don't want to be the first on the scene of an accident at that intersection, which is where my house is. And that's all I have. Thanks, guys.
Another thing, the state is in Cecil right now, capping and plugging these wells. They did one up in Old Land, and as a matter of fact, that's their equipment over there. They do one Foster Wallace's Hill up by ABB. They're plugging a lot of them wells.
That's, that's good to know, because I still have, like, beside my house, there were just like random gas pipes sitting there. They haven't been connected to anything for a while, so I know those wells are all connected around my house. And my parents live next door to me, and they had pipes over there. There's pipes across the street where Mr. Davidson lives, so I know that there are wells back there, and I've seen them when I'm back there myself. And that was it. Thank you.
Are there any other comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, at this point, we're going to close this public hearing. This will not be voted on at, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, just quickly, because we do want to, I want an executive session.
Attorney Michael Crewney, I just want to address some of the comments made by the residents, fully understanding their concern. Just want to point out that regarding the wells, the bald eagles, those things, the applicant understands that any conditional use approval would be conditioned upon compliance with all other state, federal, local laws that may apply here. So, in the event that that is something that needs to be addressed, they understand that that would be something, you know, not before this board, but would still be a condition of part of their approvals. So, it's a little bit ahead of where we're at right now, but they understand that those might have to be addressed. So, just to let you know that they are aware that that might be something that needs addressed at the time. It's been talked about on the stormwater runoff. Obviously, the township has a code. The ordinance sets forth what that runoff can be with new development, the release rates, all those things. The applicant is willing and able to meet those stormwater runoff requirements of the code. Couple other things, it's my understanding that the applicant is also willing to talk further traffic calming devices. I believe the initial proposal feedback from the engineers were more about off-site improvements, but they are willing to add on, to amend, supplement the traffic report to see if traffic calming devices might be something beneficial as well. Stop signs, things of that nature. So, the applicant is willing to also look at those, and, you know, to confirm whether or not there are additional traffic measures besides just improvements that might make sense for this, for this area. And then, finally, just would note that Kinnamack School District's schedule for 2022, 2023, the last day of school was June 2nd. Again, I know that's probably still light traffic, but they are willing to supplement the traffic report, and again, work with the township at that time to see if it's whether traffic calming or improvements would be beneficial in the area.
So, she wasn't wrong. So, June 1st was graduation day, which means no seniors and hardly any of the high school kids go. So, I would agree with Ms. King.
Correct.
In that, like, that was not what I would consider a full traffic day from a school schedule. So, I would ask that, she isn't wrong, that you would consider redoing the traffic study on a day that is fully in school, not graduation.
I think the applicant is willing to do that, again, and to address whether it's traffic calming or the improvements that have been suggested.
Right, because I don't.
Either or, correct.
Right, because my guess is you didn't get a full picture of what traffic is like Monday through Friday, 10, nine and a half or 10 months of the year.
No. That's all I have. Thank you.
This hearing is closed. We will.
Wait, one second. I'm just curious, is this supposed thing going to flow gravity or you give a pump station?
Grinder pumps.
Individual grinders, Ron.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't want to, I've closed it three times and then kept going, so. All right, this hearing is officially closed. There will not be a decision made tonight, it will be made at a future board meeting. Thank you.
I don't disagree. It's on its conditional use. We got the certificate. Probably forgot his flash drive. Comes back again, right? How's it going? Oh, Horn Road?
Yeah, Horn.
I mean, you mean to fix that piece that goes out towards McMurray?
Well, we come up on, yeah, on that bridge. Bill was going to try to do something.
Cecil says.
He, they blacked off it, and he was a little, little. He tried to, you know, he tried to fill that in, but he still got the same problem.
My answer is go out the other way, I'm sorry. I mean, I made them spend a million dollars on that other piece of Horn Road and put it up there.
That depends on where you want to go.
I understand, but I mean, you know, like, like, you know, that's what sucks about the development world, is we try to anticipate what, what these guys want to do, and we go, you can't send people to McMurray Road. I realize people are going to go that way to make a right. Right? They're not making lefts. I bet you they're trying.
Well, you mean, you mean on.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they go both ways, and it kind of depends on what time of the day.
Yeah.
You know, that, that could really use a three-way stop or a light.
That ain't never going to happen.
No, I know that. O'Hare and what?
O'Hare and 980, yeah. Took, took, took people getting killed almost, that won't happen.
Yeah, anyway, then we got a what? A four-way stop there. That's the state, right?
Yep. Yeah, I just, I just know that there's a lot of other things in the township road improvements that need done before that one's going to be addressed. And, I mean, my advice to the township would be is, you know, we can try to do whatever we can in-house. I mean, if Bill wasn't able to solve it, it sounds like not. It's going to need something more substantial.
Well, yeah, it's going to.
They need some right-of-way.
Well, okay, I don't know. Oh, electrical pole.
Yeah, took us, took us, took us almost a year to get that pole moved on to Paul. It doesn't go easily either, you know?
Well, it's just. I know these are just words, but travel that every day. Although, I think pulling out on. Hey, come.
It's called a meeting order.
Okay, I just wanted to. Yeah, I can tell you were there.
Go ahead. We can get the stream off. Videos, I heard you in my office.
Sorry about that. Something shows up. I don't know, it's something. Azalea, it's showing up on there. Doesn't matter. Okay, I'm cool. Ready. Okay, whatever, yeah, it's- About ten years ago. It's terrible. I have a really big flower on there. Recognizing, it doesn't, it doesn't even- It's not even recognizable in the video.
That would be real nice. I wonder-
Someone the flash drive.
Can't see it.
It's not even showing up.
Up here?
I, I just don't think it has-
It is right there.
Oh yeah, there it is.
Let's do, uh-
Try to, try to media clear, yeah, one of those.
This computer is so outdated.
Oh no, it's coming up. There we go.
Save the, save it for later. Say, well, let's do this, let's stop it while we can.
Okay, take it back. Copy right there, perfect.
Nice. And let me, uh-
Good find, thank you.
It'll let on structure.
That's not all.
She sent it to me, but I didn't- Like, I've lost an interest in it.
If you can't see, that's right.
Not because I can't run.
Bopped at four thirty, five o'clock today. Because I quit today. How many years worse than summer?
Because we got spoiled to them like a couple of nice weeks. Yeah.
I would love to see one.
Yeah. Like this.
I'm not getting one, I'm not gonna vote on it. I'm not, I'm not gonna vote. I, and, and they all reached out. All, reached out.
Something about he's in charge now.
Confidential message from her that Matt retired, or resigned.
I know.
Lucky that we haven't been wrote. Because nobody has not. You'll have the privilege of sitting in with her next time.
Probably has been running. In Carolina.
Offsite improvements. First of development. On thought. So I told then thinks we can put it in as a conditional. They don't offer it. Offsite improvements, and he ran them. We'll think about it. They have you volunteering offering, our forty-five days is up to vote on this, I think we're gonna put it down. Demand offsite improvements, who would deny you? It's just a conditional use. Basically, it's a use by right. With conditions on it. Different PRD. The law allows us to negotiate for offsite improvements, to let them have shorter, a lot of setbacks and all the little things we've given to them. Now they can offer it, and we can accept it. So we'll think about it, those improvements, we're looking at some costs to see what it's gonna be. Yeah, we'll, we'll consider it.